We don't like white stuff.
The light's on, when the light goes off?
Hey Chris, I called with orders.
Okay.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now. Right now, but I don't have an agenda. Oh yeah. I looked at it when I put it away. Okay, adoption of agenda.
That council adopt the agenda as presented?
Can I get a second here?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Number three, adoption of minutes, none. Number four, new business recommendation?
The council received the capital and special projects list for approval.
Can I get a second?
Second, for the rain. Just randomly, when you're welcome to second, second.
Any discussion?
Marlene, sorry.
Any discussion?
One more?
Yeah. Do you want him to go through it with us again before we, uh? I'm thinking we need a discussion for him to go through it.
Happy to your worship, thank you. So, in the agenda package, you guys, I got two copies of the, uh, the, the list. So the first one, and it's just highlighted, is a plot, uh, second draft. And then the other one is the list that was presented, the other nine. Um, and then on the screen is the new version of it. So, essentially, we, uh, quote a lot of that stuff that council had requested, but all of it, from the, the previous meeting. And the end result is to bring us down to those two numbers. So eight hundred and fifteen thousand in total of nineteen, uh, projects on the list, so...
Is that, um, how, or capable to be able to do that?
I believe so, your worship. Yeah.
Cause I don't wanna fail at that, right?
No, I agree. And we're not, uh, we're not looking to set ourselves up to fail here either this year. The pre-approval stuff, uh, I am anxious to get working on, on some of that.
So what about this upgrades a sewer line? Why is it, um, taken out?
That was removed at council's request and, uh, the request...
Cause we were doing the co-scoping.
Uh, no, through the request. There was to start moving a hundred thousand a year into reserves as opposed to putting it directly into the capital project here.
I remember that now, after you told me in.
I think this is a solid plan for, uh, for twenty eighteen, or twenty nineteen.
We're going back?
Yeah.
So Sandy will call, um, somebody for the museum exterior repairs? Sandy's gonna be calling, um, and getting quotes for those?
Yeah. For the museum exterior?
Yeah. Cause there's things that are broken on there, and we need quotes before...
Well, Les needs to let us know what's broken.
Yeah. But we should actually have contractors just go in there, look at the exterior of that building, and say, well, this needs to replace, this needs to replace. Get three different quotes, because then we can go, oh, the whole thing! Cause that's what's gonna happen.
Oh, I see where you're going.
Cause three different, well, people are gonna try out three different things, right?
If you just not put that out to the public, is anyone interested?
RFP, didn't they?
What would be a RFP?
Well, no, but they're...
We could, uh, so that, that line, line twenty-nine, um, two things about line twenty-nine, there's two... Reason we landed on the twenty-five thousand is I looked into our reserve fund balances, and we have twenty-five thousand sitting in the museum repairs capital reserve account right now.
Right.
I did speak to Les about it, mentioned to him that I was looking at moving the full twenty-five thousand into the capital budget. He felt that was okay. He has a painting quote right now for somebody to do, painting, minor side repair. Yeah, one quote, but that was just to get us, you know, to a point where we had an idea of what we were, what we were looking at. So that was seventeen grand.
So we need two, two or three quotes, I don't, just want one quote.
Yeah, the policy is to try and get...
Cause then we know, right? We know exactly, all the different contractors have looked at this building, then we know exactly what's wrong. Council's aware of what's, what's wrong with it. And then we can work towards fixing it properly, yeah.
When you talk painting, you're not talking the exterior, right?
Yeah, it is exterior painting.
You just had it done.
No, not painting.
Yes. The exterior of the building was painted when the roof was done.
I think the windows, Sandy? The windows?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I think they had to get somebody to...
But the...
The exterior, yeah?
Yes.
No, it wasn't, no.
Trina and I had to talk about it, we have the bill.
There may have been portions of it that got painted while they were doing it, but the bulk of the exterior hasn't been painted.
Then, we should go back to the bill, because it quotes that the whole thing was done.
Well, half these jobs are missing, or...
Yeah.
That's the repair.
It's soft.
There's lots of rock.
And that quote that Les got was to have that little bit of stuff repaired, as the painters were going around it, so... Yeah, so, it's soft.
When we get the museum painted, do you think we can get some extra paint on that community, healthy community signs outside the post office? I know it's just gonna take a couple of little extra paint things, or maybe public works.
Are you talking about the bulletin work?
Yeah.
Or do you get public works to do that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I was looking at that the other day, and I'm thinking, it needs a little touch-up.
Make a note of that, we'll get the summer students to do that this year.
But, um, did you guys not think that we should have more than one quote?
Yes.
And then we know what's, that needs to be done?
Absolutely.
You know, if you have three different contractors looking at it, and they have three different things...
So we could, we could leave this project in then, as-is. And then I can, uh, work with Les to get a couple of contractors in there to give us an overall opinion of the building.
Yeah, cause we're not paying until council decides. The council needs to decide who the contractors are. Let's say you're gonna take somebody out of the coffee shop and decide that. We wanna know, we wanna know as council, what we are paying for lock, stock, and metal.
And the business license.
A business license.
Him and I have our...
It has liability, insurance, everything.
Good for you.
Right down to the...
And we, we came into that last year, we obtained a quote significantly cheaper than this, and it was somebody doing it out of the back of their pickup truck. I said, we can't have that person paint the village property, it's gotta be somebody fully WCV insured, liability insured. So that number is, is a fully, you know, business-ready contractor, with a business license.
Good for you.
Okay, as long as we get three, please, Chris. I just want...
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so just to recap, folks, the, the pre-approvals then are the skate park...
The ones darkened?
The streets and lanes, yeah, the asset management plan, the boundary extension, the sidewalks, and the lagoon flow meter.
And now, the asset management, um, finalization plan. There is grants out there for us to apply for with the asset management. So that's very important.
For that particular one in here, we're already receiving a grant to cover that study. So if we choose to implement anything later on down the road from the asset management plan, we can look at applying for, for the next business project. And the skate park, you guys will notice that three twenty-five is less than the sum of the three previous numbers that were in there. Um, and that was through part of the discussion with Urban Systems, we feel there can be a little bit of financial efficiency to get it all done at the same time there too. So, it's a ballpark, we think that's reasonable to, uh, to finish it off, landscaping, lighting, everything, so... The one cautionary note, like I put in the, um, in the other report about that is, we've, we still feel we get the rid of the surface and most of it ready for that candidate deadline mark, within, you know, a meter or so. Um, the park won't be fully complete by then, especially since we're talking planting trees and...
Well, I don't want too many trees, cause they'll just get destroyed over there.
Well, we wanna put a line along the, the fence in the back, and actually now we're talking a line in the fence, and then bring it out a few meters as well, to kinda create an angular, you know? Cause even if we put the fence line there, it'll block the immediate view, we can still see all the industrial stuff off into the, into, you know, on an angle. So if we bring that out ten meters or so, it'll shield most of the park from the look of the industrial stuff in the background.
But what are they gonna hide behind that tree, those trees? That's my only question, I wanna be able to see all four corners. Maybe if I drive by, I wanna be able to see all four corners, because in Dawson, they have drug dealing issues.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Because it's, it's, uh, behind, in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
So...
That won't, that won't obscure the view of the park from the highway, from the school. What that does is prevent people in the park from seeing into the industrial area. And what, of course, anybody sitting in one of the industrial sites couldn't see into the park.
Wouldn't it be just cheaper to buy the guy that, those white slots, to put two cents?
Yeah.
Privacy slot.
Privacy slots, instead of, I can just see the trees getting destroyed, I mean, look at here, and, uh, here.
You can buy those concrete posts, too.
Just, cause the trees'll just get destroyed.
Part of it was that, you know, if we're shooting for that beginning of July, we definitely don't wanna start planting trees until, you know, later in the season, cause probably not gonna survive, planting in the middle of summer. But those, those trees aren't gonna be cheap either, because we're probably talking ten-foot mature trees in order to do what we wanna do, right off of that, so, there're gonna be a few bucks.
We do have grants that we can use, though.
Yeah, that's true.
There's free grant, no need to use that.
How much is a tree grant?
Uh, I think it's up to five thousand.
So it's two trees?
Or the no trees?
Yeah, you get little ones.
You want something a little bigger, so that they can't destroy them?
I can't remember the exact amount, but I have to think.
I'll give you guys an idea of...
What do you think, Molly? No trees, right? No expenses, no... How about it, Donna?
We're not destroying them.
Don't destroy them, Bart?
I like trees.
They need some shade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They need a lot.
Won't do much for shade.
Yeah, well, I got a lot in that park, there's a lot in this park here, that have been destroyed.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna, if one or two, fine, but if you've got... All in, or all of them are gonna get destroyed?
So the park, as we know, is going here. With the mini wrap section being there, and then a slight angle to drain it into this natural little draw. The area of the trees that we're talking about was originally along this fence line? Because this, this is, you know...
Heart, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on in there, and it's not super visually appealing. So what we're actually talking about was going here, and then also down here, maybe there or so. So the people in the park couldn't see down to the rest of it. Cause if we've got a picnic table here, let's say, somebody's sitting there, with the trees stopped, you're still seeing all of the rest of that stuff over there. So it's just playing with the angles for the, for the trees, to kinda block as much of the view into here for people using the park as, as possible. This is already an eight, if not a nine-foot chain link fence, being seen right through.
But those privacy slots, you can put them through.
Yeah, the privacy slots might be an option, your worship. Yeah. That would save a few bucks, for sure.
I'd like, I'd like, put one or two trees...
Oh, my parents?
Yeah.
You could careganas or work, they go out...
Yeah, you can't kill those for nothing.
Actually, Ken at the back.
Oh, okay.
Cool, that, that fence is long, because it, it's not only, I don't think this is heart overfilling, the property sold, so it's somebody else that's in there now. But this is a continuous piece of fence that go all the way down.
That's all heart.
Do we, do we own the fence, or do they own it?
Different company bought it, but it is all heart, heart bought that property.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can...
Then we can't very well, unless they are okay with it.
I think, if I, if I wrote them a letter and said we wanted to put some slots in there to, to, if they would have an issue with it.
To cover, we're not being whole fans, we'll do just on our side of problems.
Okay, so let's, I'd suggest leaving the budget as-is, folks, and those are discussions we can have as we go down the, go down the line. But, uh, I'm pretty sure that gives us a number that we can, we can record.
I'm sorry, but I just see kids over the last three years destroy a lot of trees.
Um, council was talking lots about the LED lights as well. I did have a conversation with Blair, he's kinda done an inventory, if you will, of, of the areas council requested we, we switched to LEDs. Turns out, most of them are actually B C Hydro's lamp poles. So not in our purview to go on switching up, we've gotta write a letter to B C Hydro requesting they do it.
Oh, Bob. I'll pick up the phone, I'll give Bob.
And the way, the way that works in town apparently is all the wooden posts are B C Hydro's, all the steel ones are, and most of the ones in the downtown corridor...
I want those wooden ones removed and put metal ones put in.
That would be a letter to B C Hydro, your worship.
That'd be, that's a...
Well, Bob's told us that he'd be tempted to go ahead and write the letter, he'd make sure it went through. Remember, we had that discussion?
Well, that's something that'd have to come from, from council, wouldn't have any weight coming from the administration, so...
Why do you want wood?
No, I want the, I want the wood. Well, those ugly wood ones are, they're all leaning. They all look like they went, spent the name at the hotel.
Well, have the shelving stuck to Paul's ear?
No, just future it.
They're already, they're sort of email, your house.
It'd be so sad.
My mother did that to us. Just three of us would have kind of stuck to the...
So, just to confirm the process here, two guys, we're, we're, you know, better part of three months away from adopting the full budget. What we're doing by adopting this portion of it is council's giving the green light to these projects as presented. The reason the ones are shaded for pre-approval is because we wanna get going on those right away, and in fact, we are working on those right away. So by approving this to adopt it in the agenda, what I generally request is that, that means, you know, for the final draft of the agenda, when we're at the eleventh hour, and we're into the three bylaw readings, if you guys don't come back to us and say, well, let's revisit the capital projects again, and we'll knock a couple off. It's, it's too late at that point, we're far too deep into the, into the process.
So, the lagoon meter we actually have?
Nope, we have to order that, but, um...
How do we know it's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars?
Uh, I have a quote from Urban Systems for it.
And who's gonna change it? We have to put that out to them.
We, they've single sourced it, there's only a couple of companies that do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have, we have two, right? There's one, the discharge meter, that's actually failed, we're in the process of trying to change that and replace it right now. And then this one is to put the meter on the end, so we can monitor flow in, flow out, and then...
So this is also getting ready for what we've discussed with Leonard, to, like, will this be something...
No, it wasn't, it wasn't, this was a project conceived in two thousand and fifty. And I'm gonna be really honest with you, it was one of those projects, from what I can tell, is, hey, there's a grant out there, we need to build one of these things. We've gone sixty years, right? We don't actually have a requirement to monitor the flow coming in to the sewer. I mean, we do have a requirement to report the stuff going in. We were already underway, by the time I got to the desk, there'd already been forty-five thousand charged towards this project, the design was done. You know, we do have a grant for it, so we're covering ninety-some-odd thousands of this project from the grant. So the actual net cost to the village is pretty low.
So can we use that meter, without talking out of turn here? Uh, use that meter, and you guys all know what I'm talking about, for that one area, right? You should be able to see what's going down to the sewer?
Yeah, well, and that's, so, Urban, because council's adopted the West Coast Plan, Urban's, Urban feels now that this is, you know, still a beneficial project to the village, because we can get an idea of what's going into the lagoons, and then tell us if our estimates of the lagoon capacity to be able to service West Coast makes sense.
Or Abbot Towners.
Or Abbot Towners, yeah, for, you know, something like a standing dump, or whatever, might be down the road, but, I mean, it's valuable information to have, I guess, but, uh, you know? And we're so far down the, down the rabbit hole on this, that we might as well get it completed. Like I said, there's, there's ninety-three thousand left in the, in the grant, so the net cost to the village to have this done seems to make sense. If we don't do it this year, the, the grant folks have told us we're not giving any more extensions, it's, it's done, it's off the table, so... Might as well see through completion.
So do you want us to just adopt now?
Uh, yeah, if council's okay with it, you guys have no more questions, then a motion, uh, adopting?
Yeah, just one question, sorry. The, with regards to the single sourcing of installation, uh, you know, that, that's, that's, that's difficult to take in. Certainly, there must be other companies that could perform that task. When you have just one person, they can charge what they want. Like, for example, A J F Moles built the new raw water reservoir for Nelson Creek. There's flow meters to indicate what's going in, and flow meters to indicate what's going out. You know, is there a difference?
Well, there's plumbers, there's plumbers, all kinds of plumbers that would, they can install them, if they're willing to, right? There's the question.
And in this project, this is completely outside my area of expertise, I'm relying on Water and Systems is, is recommending to me, I'm a reputable contractor to, to do this.
So, but we don't have a cost for installation?
We have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars set aside for the budget.
Yeah.
For the installation of this flow meter?
Installation and, and the purchase of the meter. So we're gonna buy the meter directly, Urban Systems has arranged a contractor that can install that meter for us once we purchase it.
Can we maybe call around to see...
How much is the flow meter?
Uh, flow meter's about eight thousand.
How much?
Eight thousand.
I think we need some quotes, Chris.
Yeah. I can't handle that, your worship, I would be calling the plumber, and what do we install, no idea, I have an accounting.
But we should have a report from Urban Systems on it, so we can...
The first thing they're gonna ask me is specs, pipe size, what are we doing, I don't know, I have an engineer at this project.
Oh, if we have, if we have the, um, information from Urban Systems on what has to take place...
Yep.
And I'm sure we could contract, I could figure out from Dale, who did Dawson Creek's.
We could, I'd also say that the project costs will go up, cause then we'd be looking at issuing the tender documents as well. So we're looking at five to ten thousand issuing the tender.
Or it might be cheaper.
It could, that could be the net.
Yeah, but, yeah.
You said it's only eight thousand, why do you need ninety-three thousand?
The unit itself, um, is eight thousand, the installation is the difference.
You have that much to put it in? Look, I'll go take the course, look at Danny and Justin down there for ninety-three thousand dollars!
Eric, this is, this is a municipal infrastructure project, folks, it's fully engineered, it's gonna be built to spec, and it's gonna be built by a contractor that, you know, the premier engineering firm in the region recommends to do this.
Can we find out from, maybe Ken can find out from notes, who actually installed?
This is the meter of the stuff going out of the...
Going in.
Going in. And we, okay. I'm just thinking environmentally, uh, standards or whatever, I'm sure they've looked at that. I mean, need to be certified for issues in the future. If we have a contractor who is with this company, or is familiar with this company...
I guess, and I'm gonna say this a little bit, you know, well, as it is, if council's uncomfortable with this project, we can walk away now.
No, I guess, but it needs to be done, because we need to know what's going in there. But I just have a hard time with ninety-three thousand dollars. It's no different than the hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars straight that they're over at the skate park. It's no different, I mean, I, I, a hundred and twenty-four, whack.
I could make those, those calls while I was on the phone with both you and the contractor as well, cause that didn't seem reasonable to me, your worship. I have zero idea what's involved in building something like this.
But we'll get a report from Urban Systems, so we'll have some idea.
We have it already, there's a detailed quote involved in, in getting us there, but whether or not that's fair numbers for the work being done, I, I don't know.
I'd actually, I'd actually like a copy of that, cause I know quite a few plumbers. I know a very, very good plumber that's retired, and could probably tell me who to get.
Didn't we just finish saying we wanted three quotes for the reviews?
And like I said, two councils over, that's in purchasing policy? When I spoke to Urban Systems, and I said, who can do that for us, it was these guys.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
They're the go-to name in engineering in this place.
Yes.
But, you know, it, it seems, it seems different, it seems odd to me, that you're paying eight thousand dollars for a valve, and eighty-seven thousand for someone to put it in.
On the recommendation of one.
On the recommendation of the supplier.
Okay.
Unfortunately, but I want, as a right man of...
These are the decisions you're here to make, so if, if that doesn't sit well with you, then direct me to go out and get tenders on this, and...
Well, the plumber that I'm talking about built Curtis York's building, he redesigned, uh, some of those codes for the gas pain. So, like, this, this isn't a stupid math, and I would definitely have him look at the reporting on his recommendations and say, no, Ray, and I think you should stick to Urban Systems. This is why. Yeah? Or, no, you could do that cheaper.
You know, it's, on the surface, we have a, a grant to cover this cost, so what doesn't matter to us, but I think we have to be responsible with the money, whether it's, you know, saying, we don't need it all, but this is what we do need, I think that's a responsible thing to do.
Yeah. Okay. So then, if you guys are okay with the project concept, then if you approve this line through the list, I can still purchase the meter, and then we can, we can look at...
Yeah, we still want the project to go through.
I get your opinions whether or not we go with this, this price or not.
Yeah.
Okay?
I made that motion, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, you guys can, someone can make a motion that this be...
That's a great motion.
Or I'll make the motion that, uh, council approves this agenda, uh, this, this capital and special projects list.
With the stipulation?
With the stipulation that anything that has to be done within the village, we need three quotes. And can I get a second here on that?
Oh, go ahead.
All in favor? Right, exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
One down.
This is easy.
This one gets fun anyways, eh?
Ken, number two recommendation.
Do you want me to make that motion?
Yeah.
That council receive the budget for general government, environment, health, public health, and welfare and recreation for discussion.
Call second.
And discussion.
My turn again?
It's the wording that's lost.
There it goes. So, I put the PowerPoint on here, wait, it's this time, you guys, but of course, it's up on, uh, on here as well. So this is operating budget number one, and I'll be bringing this thing back to you guys a second time, similar to what we just did with the capital and special projects. But tonight, we're gonna be talking about general government, which includes the administration, finance, and general town hall operations. Uh, environmental health, which really needs our garbage and recycling program. Public health and welfare, which is animal control by law and cemetery, and then the recreation, which is hoof park, museums, library, and, uh, other celebrations. Picking it up with the good news portion of it. Uh, in two thousand and eighteen, now that most of the costs have come in for the year, uh, our two thousand and eighteen budget for those four departments, we set a hundred and fifty-four thousand. Uh, we finished the year so far at six hundred and eighty-four. We still have a few invoices coming in from, from various, uh, various sources, so those are our amounted numbers. But we're sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars under budget here.
Good job, Chris and Sandy.
Thank you.
I stand, you say.
Yeah. That's actually not really good news, eh, either? So, um, of those four categories, general government, environment, finance, public health, and recreation, um, all together, we're seeing, uh, total category budgets of a hundred and eleven thousand, and total actionals of, or, sorry, one point one million, I should say, and here is about a million. So there's a difference among all four categories of about ninety-nine thousand dollars in total savings across the categories. So that means, we're the budget for three hundred.
Three years in a row, we said funny.
And, uh, but we're not stopping there, um, so the forecast is for twenty nineteen, uh, just in the general government, we've prepared a budget that's forty-one thousand dollars below what it was in two thousand and nineteen. And the cumulative savings, uh, in just that category since two thousand and sixteen, as an example, we've lowered the budget a hundred and forty-two thousand... we've lowered the budget a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in just admit since two thousand and thirteen. So, uh, as you guys have alluded to, congrats are in order, so if these kind of results don't happen with a really focused team effort, folks, um, so congrats to council and definitely congrats to staff too. Um, these were amazing results considering how busy this year was, and last year as well. So, regarding the general government, like I mentioned, we're looking at a forty-one thousand dollar, uh, budget increase in that category for two thousand and nineteen. How we got there is reductions in the legal budget. Obviously, the election cost's not on the table anymore, we won't see that for another four years, because everybody's saying...
Well, if it wins sixty-six million, I'm sorry, I can't guarantee that.
Yeah, I... Understandable, your worship. Uh, so, we've seen some, uh, a decrease of post office maintenance budget, because historically, we haven't been spending the eighteen thousand that was in there on, on post office maintenance. And then I've also reduced the admin staff, uh, travel expense budget. Not everything is down, of course, so there are some areas where we've seen increases. Uh, council expenses being one of them, I'll go through those in more detail in a minute. Uh, we've had to increase the computer costs, because frankly, that stuff's getting more expensive. Uh, general government wages, we're seeing, and you guys are seeing in the actual numbers as well. We budgeted about seven, or two hundred and seventy-five thousand for general government wages. We hit two ninety-six, I think, were the numbers. Uh, we went back and looked at it, and that increase is largely a result of the overtime as a result of the community events and, and stuff that we're doing on the side, so...
But there's nothing we can do, because we can't get volunteers.
No, and that's it, your worship. So, I've increased that budget accordingly, but just so that you know, we're seeing, we're seeing, you know, the hours that the staff are putting in for those extra, extra things, um, start to, to show, you know.
So, I mean, having that lady run the July first, would, that would have been the same price as that?
Potentially, yeah, potentially. I did make a note here, and it's in a subsequent slide as well. We've seen roughly a threefold increase in community events just when I, just since I've started. So, when I landed here, you know, we were doing Canada Day, the Trucklight Parade, basically the two things that staff were called on to do evenings and weekends. Now, we're seeing Canada Day again, the Santa Claus parade, the jamboree, the spring fling, the PRLGA meetings, the council tea event, additional council meetings for various things. Um, weekend presentations to the fire hall, where Alistair's coming in and doing photos and stuff. He's getting overtime for those, that's not pro bono work on his part. Um, the Poose Park opening celebration, so I do make reference to it in the further slide, but all the G...
This year, we don't have the PRLGA.
No.
It's gonna be important, John, to have the invitation.
Is it possible? Well, I do remember. But what, what I'd like to highlight with that council is, in my opinion, as the, the staff's manager for the village, this is the limit that I'm prepared to ask staff to do.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're not gonna have a council tea, you know? We've, we've already had that.
Yeah.
What's spring fling?
Yeah.
That was our barbecue?
Yeah.
So, that was the birthday, so are we still gonna have a barbecue in the spring? Because we've got the jamboree.
Sandy! So, last year, you guys asked us to put together a volunteer dinner, tea. We didn't get to do it.
Oh.
We have swag for it.
Yeah.
Um, and councillor Smith had asked that it be moved to this year. So, we're, I don't know, if you guys still wanna do it or not.
We give thank you to those people. Like, our part, our part.
We had sent out invitations last year, but we ended up having to cancel it, because we only had three people respond or something. It was a bad time.
Yeah, the volunteer banquet, you know, got off.
So, spring would be better. Yeah, a bad time of year that we haven't, when we finally got it done, I think it was throughout the summer, was it?
It was August, and we were gonna try and push it to September, but with UBCM, it just didn't work. So...
People are busy, if you don't get it done by the end of May, they're too...
And then the spring fling, you guys had asked if we could do a yearly thing in conjunction with the museum garage sale.
Yeah.
So, we didn't do it last year, but do you wanna do it this year? And if that's the case, then we have to start planning to set in May.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking we should. You know, get us cooking hot dogs and, you know, it's...
I, I'm over there setting up tables and stuff like that, and then we can get out and cook some hot dogs and hamburgers for people.
You're gonna be the chef, not me. You're the cooker.
I got off on that one.
Another thing to think of, outside of the time that, that, you know, your staff are spending at these events, is all lead-in time to, to...
Which is, which is fine, but that's what...
We've been working on this jamboree, we've got the better part of three months' worth of meetings into this jamboree so far. It's a ton of organizational logistics we need.
But you know what, if it takes off as a hit, if it's a hit, if it, it goes off as a hit...
Yeah.
Then we, we, you guys can pat yourselves on the back, we can pat ourselves on the back. If it doesn't, then we've learned. From next year, we don't have a jamboree. Like, it's just bringing in something else to have people here to enjoy our community. And, and we need to do those things.
Yes, in the past, with three volunteers, it did it.
Oh, it did talent show. Um, I wanna say for the jamboree, the note on it for weather cancellation, I like the way you guys worded it in the bottom, that if the weather gets too cold or too warm...
Yeah.
Events could be canceled, because we're going to get those people...
Then you're gonna say something.
And it's usually not residents, it's usually people. But that's good, they're, they're coming.
I see that somebody's asked if it was gonna be a talent show.
Yeah, I see that.
Like, really?
I do know I missed having to organize that all twice.
We don't give that much, inject too much.
So, graphically speaking, speaks for itself, um, I'm down on this little curve. Yeah, not much more to say than that, really. Getting into the actual numbers, I split this into two PowerPoint slides, so what you guys will see on page, uh...
Is that right?
Yeah. Um, it's not quite the exact same split that you're seeing on the, uh, on the agenda package, but this is essentially line by line, uh, I've included the unaudited actials lying in there, as well as the budget for two thousand and nineteen, and then projected forward. These numbers here, for the most part, are really just projected forward out of two percent inflation or increase. That doesn't actually happen in every category, but it's, it sounds like we practiced it. So, yeah. Yeah, more than happy to go over it with you, line by line, but the ones that I highlighted on the previous slide were the council expenses, and that line is for some of the donations. It was, uh, when Katie had asked me to increase that line to, because we're already seeing some applications from some of the groups in Dawson that have been denied funding through them, so, uh, you know, I'm totally at council's discretion, of course. Council meetings and...
Well, for example, the, um, Rotary, what are, no, not Rotary, what are they called to play the music?
Kiwanis Band.
Kiwanis Band.
We have a letter from them that came today.
Yes, because they, Dawson will give them a grant of seventy-one hundred dollars. So, I messaged the girl on, on Facebook there, and I said, "You know, you should maybe give a letter to Poose, and council will discuss it, because the Kiwanis come here and play in the band."
And we pay them for the group.
Yeah, but I, I'm still saying, like, and, and Mary and Everett, our Poose County residents, she thought it was a conflict of interest to even ask me, because they lived here in Poose.
But if they live in Dawson, then they can ask Dawson.
Yeah, but she just, so I said, "Just give us a letter and, and approach Poose, because it's really not fair, they've been around forever."
And they have participated in this village, to be explained.
Anytime we reach out to them, they come. So, I, I, that's why it's up there. And then also, South Peace Cultural Society was cut back.
And we got the art council on, or tomorrow.
And the art council was cut back?
So, that kind of begs the question, then, is, is that, is that number enough? Are you guys comfortable with it, should we look at?
Which line is it?
That was, uh, this one, council expenses.
Six thousand dollars, it's not enough.
No, it's, it was six thousand in the twenty-eighteen, but the budget is...
Because the school, or the school alone is ten grand, for us to put our logo back up on the gym.
Good. I can use that, so you, and you want.
It's gonna cost us ten thousand?
It cost us five, because I was, and the rest was for five. It was one, it was only sixty-one. But they actually, they, they're not giving a number, that's just what they've been, they've lost. Last year, we only paid five.
Five, what do you mean, five for what?
To put our logo on the gym for the kids, the schools? Remember, we had our pictures taken, we gave a big check out here?
Yeah, from South Peace, yeah.
That's the same, I'm comfortable.
Oh, okay.
Because they're ten grand.
Okay, okay, I thought you were talking about the logo on the school, our community center. Yeah, then Kana, I was gonna say, ten thousand dollars.
As Sammy was mentioning, something to folks that, you know, we're seeing those organizations come back to us now, that their funding has been declining with requests equal to what they were receiving from the city of Dawson Creek. Something you guys have to wrestle with is when, you know, where they're, when they're afraid. Is it reasonable if the village of Poose picks up the entire tag from that organization?
But I'm saying, you know, like, the regional district, they say, "If you come, two thousand, five thousand dollars, we'll give you twenty-five percent to you where you ask." And I think we should maybe implement that too.
I would say, it depends on the organization, I'd say.
And I would say, if we put that out there, that, that strike, everybody, we're gonna see, oh, we're looking for five, so the policy's twenty-five, we'll just increase this to twenty-eight, we'll give it five anyway.
But that's when maybe...
I think internally, that might be an okay thing, that, that, you know, but I don't know if we put that out there.
There's no way we can give to every...
No.
Everyone, so, you know what I mean?
But the Kiwanis is important.
What I'm saying, yeah, but there'll be others that will be just as important. We're gonna have to set a limit on how many, if they're all coming, I...
I don't, that, those are just, I, those are the few that I think are important. The historical society is, is important, because it, it, um, has history there. And to cut back on, on the wages they did, they hired a person to catalog forty-two boxes of indigenous peoples' stuff, and then they went and cut back the wages on that person, so they don't have that catalog person anymore.
Yeah, we can't, like, cover...
No, we can't cover that, I'm just saying, you know, help them with donations and stuff.
So, what we could look at doing, your worship, and I helped do this in my time at the district of Tumbler Ridge, is put together a policy and an application document that puts some of this stuff on paper.
And I wanna see where else they're getting funding?
Correct. Not only that, I know council's often spoken to, you know, a number of Poose residents that are, that are part of the organization, considering the grant application, so we should put that in there. And I can literally call Tumbler and ask them to borrow the paper out there and, you know, tailor it to our, to our needs here. But something I've seen a lot of times in the past with not-for-profit societies, is not-for-profit societies have extremely large reserve balances on, you know? Um, and, you know, and that was part of that process that we were doing there, where some of that stuff came to our attention, and we said, "Well, wait a sec, we need a group that's asking for ten thousand to report to us whether or not they actually need this money."
And we also wanna hear back from these people too.
Yeah, and that was part of it as well, that if the group didn't turn around and report what they'd done with the village's or, you know, the district's funds at the year end, then that pretty much disqualifies them for a grant, because it's important that they report back to you guys. If we're, if we're allocating taxpayer dollars to these groups, what do they need with the taxpayer dollars throughout the year?
Ken?
I would recommend against having a policy, because they get locked into something. I would prefer, and it might be semantics, but I would prefer the term of guidance.
An application.
Something that we're not tied to, that we have to...
Policy that gives us guidance.
Yeah, and certainly wouldn't be council, Robert, there, in a donation like that, it's, it's a majority vote of council, so because somebody put an application in, doesn't guarantee them the funding in any way, shape, or form. This is a discretionary account for you guys, and three out of five upwards a donation to, to that organization, so... If for any reason, council, you know, you guys get a, an application from a group, and collectively you decide, yeah, there's not enough Poose connection to, to really make this work for us, for our taxpayer dollars, then, you know, a vote and, there you go.
I'm so worried that we'll take that money, because everybody coming here, because their budget starts in May, and there'll be groups in Poose after the fact that will be wanting some donation, and we won't have any money left in our budget. I'm, I'm thinking of Remembrance Day service at the Legion. I think we should donate to that, because they're doing it for the village.
That's already done.
But, or, you know what I mean, the art class coming out here to do art classes, um, different things that are coming up. Maybe the, maybe church might have something they're going to do. I just don't wanna give it all to Dawson Creek's reject budgets.
No.
I mean, they said that whoever comes to us, that we make the, we would make the decision on whether we would give them something or not. And I'm assuming that we would have Poose at the top of the list.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Like any, any kids, like, that's important to have sports and arts and things like that for kids, it's, it's important. And the Kiwanis Art Center, or Kiwanis Band has been around forever. So, if we can't give them a donation, then there's issues.
Well...
All right, I...
That, that's, you know, that can be said of all of the organizations that Poose residents participate in.
There's, there's certainly a limit to what we can do without it. And I think knowing the financial statements of the organizations making the applications is important too, because like I say, I've literally seen applications for not-for-profit societies for ten thousand dollars. And when I look at their financials, there's a hundred thousand dollars sitting in, in GICs, and when I ask the president of that group, "Where's all this money from?", "Oh, over the last couple of years, we haven't used all your donations, so we just, we did some smart investing. We've, we've set it aside for any day." "Well, why are you asking me for ten thousand?", "Well, we always got ten thousand, so we just asked for what we got last year." "I'm sorry, tonight, your, your group clearly doesn't, you're not for-profit society, what are you doing with those kinda, kinda balances?"
Just like a, a household, that's everybody that's stuck with it.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Now, what, did you wanna propose to increase it?
Yes, I wanted twenty-five.
Motion to council upset twenty-five.
Second. All in favor? What, you have something to say?
Yeah, um, we're upping our budget to give money away, because Dawson Creek is tightening, tightening their budget. I, I hesitate to up ours, I'm sorry, to get all of them coming here.
It's valid, it's valid, but there is two for sure, the art council and the South Peace.
And like Chris said, he's gonna check into their...
I know, but they've never come to us before, it's only because Dawson Creek...
No, it's because I reached out to them. I reached out to the Kiwanis Art Band, or whatever they're called. I reached out to them, because they do, anytime we jump, they jump.
They come up here.
They get paid, but regardless, they still...
We can also look, and council's kinda indicated this in, in one of the other ones as well, with the, who was it? Forget what group, but something along the lines of a grant or community service. We know from the previous slide, we're struggling to get volunteers for all of these events we're doing. It wouldn't be out of council's, you know, discretion, I guess, to say to a group, "We're proposing offering you five thousand dollars, we need help, we need five more people to show up on..."
And if they don't show up on the next year, now it's the other one?
The following year, that may be disqualifying factor, you know?
Yeah, because we have a few people that are the Kiwanis Band that do it.
I'm sure the basketball, the volleyball, oh, Josh, you have all those guys over here.
Yeah, and it'd be, you know, that'd be nice from a staff standpoint too, because, you know, in addition to the wages, a lot of us have our family members come out and do the volunteering and that kinda stuff. If, you know, if we could, we could get some of the community volunteers benefiting from the taxpayer dollars to show some love back to the community by volunteering for one or two of the events, that would be the best. Okay?
Make sure you put them in the little...
Yeah, go on.
So, financials. Uh, moving down the line, yeah, that's, that's the general government, the religious line I mentioned. We've kinda talked about this one. The office ins... The office insurance, you'll notice four thousand dollar budget, eleven thousand dollar actual. Because we switched insurance providers this year, had to have all the properties appraised and several thousand dollars to get that done, so it made.
But why, why did we change providers? Better, we've got better service, better providing.
And there was something about, we were faced with a large increase and ended up paying a bit of money and wound up being cheaper, but up nonetheless, if I remember correctly. So, so I bought that to, to bring it closer to the actual. Uh, where else? Yeah, administration, contracting GL, I've lowered that significantly. Uh, the base staff travel expense, we've knocked five thousand off of there. There's that computer line that we're seeing, so our actuals last year came in about forty-six. So I've put it at forty-seven.
Chris, when the general, general government employee wages, you also need to say that you do how many jobs here?
Uh, two, close to three.
Okay, and Blair does how many?
Two, close to three.
Okay, so we've cut back.
Yeah, and that's, that's reflected in the overall savings. I mean, just, just for me, the CAO CFO role. When it was me and Adam here, it was about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eight thousand for the two of us. You know, so we've been forty thousand knocked off of that to, to, you know, that unit, but. Yeah, advertising, we've cut back as well. We were only at thirty-nine hundred last year, so I put that a little closer to the actuals. Any questions on that?
Simon, did you want your advertising a little higher?
Advertising is one of the major areas. We've made savings in this budget. So we were spending thousands and thousands of dollars prior to two thousand and seventeen. If I'm not mistaken, it was a year where that advertising budget was like forty thousand dollars. And we had eight thousand dollar ads in magazines and stuff like that, for what? We would never recover that cost, so that's one of the major areas over that, that four-year period that we've seen a lot of savings. Uh, so yeah, I've reduced the legal amount. We only came in at ninety-eight hundred. Um, I still left it at seventeen-five. I'm gonna keep an eye on that for the next couple of years. We should be able to save a few bucks on that going forward too. Um, and then the legislative bylaw, we took our large amount of money over there. That was for a bylaw contractor. Blair is now the bylaw officer, but I did leave five thousand for bylaw supplies. Uh, economic development, we've reduced it a little bit. Grant writer, we've reduced it. Our grant writer was thirty-two hundred last year, so I'm adding for ten thousand in there. Uh, elections is off the table, of course. And then the discretionary ones that you were talking about, you're worship all the way down here in minor capital. Really administratively, we've got two sort of discretionary accounts, if you will. Um, the admin miscellaneous costs and then minor capital.
We just put the administration of office costs.
So that one you worship?
Yeah. Get the miscellaneous ones out of there.
Get minor capital out of there?
No, minor capital's fine.
Okay.
Um, but where is this admin miscellaneous? Can we just put that as admin office costs?
Admin costs, yeah, admin office costs, yeah. And really, that's what it is. That's where a lot of our stationery and stuff ends up, ends up going there, so.
Let Ken know that Mayor doesn't like miscellaneous. I don't wanna break down everything. If that's the case, admin office.
Okay, that change I'll have to make inside the RIS because it's covered, so. Um, but yeah, so what that means is last year, the total, uh, total budget was seven fifty-four. Like I mentioned in the previous slide, we spent six eighty-four. And this year's budget is seven hundred and twelve.
But we're not gonna hit that.
In all likelihood, no, because we keep compressing those accounts that we're, we're not using, so we're getting closer and closer. It's, we're never gonna hit a point where the budget and this number is ideal. We always need a little bit of an operating buffer there for stuff that comes up, so. Something like the legal GL, for example, if I, if I close that right down to five thousand dollars and all of a sudden we get hit with a lawsuit for some reason and then it's gotta go to legal. You know, we can go through that in two weeks of getting with the lawyers.
What's public relations?
Um, boys. Public relations, uh, I'm drawing a blank on what's in that right now.
We don't pay the C D C now, and we have Austin here for free.
I believe that's, that, oh, I know what that is. Public relations is where we put our community surveys, the, the cost to do our mail drops and our community consultation items. Okay. Uh, moving on, environmental health. Um, oh, sorry, that's page eighty-one. Yeah, okay, that's just your, um, that's, so that's the garbage and recycling collection. Uh, forecasted increase in this category of a thousand dollars for two thousand and nineteen. And that is almost entirely due to increases in the garbage truck repairs and maintenance, and we'll see that in a second.
And this garbage truck.
So the budget, and we were actually over budget in this in two thousand and nineteen for exactly that reason. And the reason being, when Blair came in and took over that department, he immediately, you know, he's a former transportation guy, so he immediately started working or looking at our equipment and literally found like eight thousand dollars of stuff on the garbage truck that it just let go and wasn't being done. Seals and brakes and tires, and so he came and he said, I've identified all this stuff, what are you hoping to do with it? I said, you're a transportation guy, trust your judgment on this, get this, get this truck to.
Probably a garbage truck with wrecked tires on it in two thousand and fifteen.
Well, the first one burned up.
Yeah, the worst one burned up.
At the end of the day, folks, it's not, I mean, it's two thousand dollars on an overall municipal budget of two and a half million. It's, it's not gonna, gonna blow the doors off of the total budget, but I don't like seeing stuff that's over budget. But if it does happen, at least a good justifiable reason, like we, we fixed up a piece of equipment that it didn't neglect for a while, is a good reason to see it happen, so. Um, still seeing similar trend here though. Environmental health budget was fifty-nine thousand in two thousand and sixteen. And we're at forty-eight here this year, including that small increase from, from last year.
Oh, I just love saving money.
But you're heading in the right direction. You don't want your stocks going in that direction?
No.
Uh, so looking at it in detail, um, it's pretty self-explanatory, other than, like I say, where the two cost increases come in. We had a thousand dollars and we split the, the truck repairs up between garbage and recycling. It's pretty, it's the same truck, so. We gotta just pick a GL depending on, on what's in there, but you can see what we budgeted and what we ended up spending. So we're seven thousand dollars plus over, over budgeting that. So I've increased it to twenty-five hundred, knowing that those repairs have been made, but the truck is getting old. It's, you know, it's going through seals.
Twenty years.
I won't say for sure, worship, I'll have to ask Blair.
No.
We body used that for sure.
Yeah.
And we body used with some color.
Work with some on it.
Anything, you guys wanna dive into a little bit deeper there?
No.
Pretty straightforward there. Public health and social welfare, AKA animal control and bylaw. Uh, forecasted decrease in this category of eighty-three hundred dollars. Mostly due to the bylaw role being combined with the fire chief and a decrease in the animal control officer's supplies as well. Um, and the actuals were way under that category as well, so. Uh, we budgeted forty-eight thousand in two thousand and eighteen and we spent thirty-one thousand and six hundred.
Oh, it's so, I'm so glad we think alike. I'm, I am so glad.
And that's, that's the steepest rolling graph that we've got, but.
Dawn, did you ever make a donation to step up in our art?
No, she held us hostage on July first.
Okay.
So she got it on.
Animal control.
Yeah.
Um, I have some questions.
Okay.
Uh, we don't have any shelter in place for any animals. Uh, SPCA, have they got back to us on?
Unfortunately not. So Wendy has been in communication with me, I believe, three times, and all three of those emails have been, I'm working on it. I'm busy. I'm still talking to the board. I'll get you the numbers as soon as I can. And I'm, so I'm waiting on numbers. I was hoping to present those to council for this meeting on where we were with our five thousand dollar cat program donation. How many people have used it? What's remaining in that sinking fund? I have no idea right now. And then the ask was to see what the board wanted as a contribution from the village to have a dedicated kennel at the new SPCA building. Um, no answer on that.
How does she expect us, if she doesn't give us any numbers, this is budget time, she knows that. It's, it's frustrating.
And really, if we were gonna look at doing that too, that should've been in the capital and special, special project budget, so.
Is, is less comfortable the way the staff's polling?
It's, it's working okay. Um, you know, mostly because.
You still got the three cats. I mean, so SPCA, will anyone talk to them, get the cats? You've had three, three kittens since, before Christmas?
Since the week of Christmas, like, is when he got those three cats, and that was part of the original email to, to Wendy that, hey, my animal control officer picked these cats up. He said he's tried multiple times to get them in and put them spayed and neutered under the cat control program. What's happening with that? And by the way, he's keeping them in his backyard.
I hope you write something in the newspaper about this.
Can we find, can we find a spot to house them at the SPCA and? We're both.
And all it takes is a quick email back saying, you know what I mean?
Well, and, and admittedly, like I say, she has responded. Just the emails have been more of a deflection that I'm working on and plugging to the numbers as soon as I can, and there's been, been no follow-up.
Well, you have opened up that means of, um, SPCA. So trying to get that organized and.
Yeah, I imagine she's busy. And even the cat control thing, I understand has come to a screeching halt because the vet and the agreement, the original agreement was with is no longer in business, so.
It's retired?
It's, yeah. I think she's, she's in a tough spot right now trying to coordinate that and make that all work, so I'm, I'm not trying to throw her under the bus, but he needs it, you know? But it would be nice for us to have that information and be able to make some decisions here, so. But outside of that, um, yeah, yeah, small budget decrease there as well in terms of the category. And like I say, we've moved these into, into wages as opposed to contractor. And really, that's about it. Les is doing a good job to manage his, his contract within the budget and he's definitely not spending a ton of money on, on supplies, so. Part of that five hundred and thirty-three bucks was actually food for those cats over the last couple of months. Because he, he came and talked to me and, Jesus, what are you doing? Housing and feeding them and he just says, you know, would you guys be willing to cover the food for that? Of course. So he's not coming into that, a little bit of animal control supplies. But because he's done, he's done well there, like, not a thousand bucks.
He's done well.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I gotta say, I'm, I'm very happy with the services. You know, the reports are coming in. He's meeting the contractual obligations that he, he said he was gonna do. Got a hundred and ten percent.
Right, he's a hundred and two.
Yeah.
And residents could be attentive when they need it.
Yeah, they get one-on-one.
And I've kept every single one of his animal control reports. They're filed in, in my office. And there's a notable difference between the first few months that he was doing that, you know, it was ten dogs and cats and stuffed animals that were running wild all over town. And now it's three or four. A lot of the, a lot of the reports are coming back saying, I'm doing regular patrols. I'm driving around trying to find something to pick up. The people know that he's out there now.
Yeah, but there's also the same dogs that keep bringing out because you don't wanna fix their fence or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, there's often reports there where it says, I picked this dog up for the third time or the fourth time, so.
But once it starts costing them, they generally fix their fence, you would think.
And I, he asked me a moment ago if it was working. His, and I asked him about that too. His comments were that it's working now only because when he captures an animal, it's usually picked up the same day. So the need to house them overnight is, is pretty minimal. Um, but that's not to say that, you know, we're glad in that service, we should have, you know, a code compliant place to, to shelter the animals or, you know, do something with the city of Dawson, but.
But if, if SPCA isn't getting back for us to be able to have a kennel, how are we supposed to do that?
Yeah, we're kinda in a rock and hard place.
So as long as the residents know that, that SPCA are not stepping forward and giving us a price to actually rent it, and it is budget time.
Yeah. And outside of those emails too, your worship, that's not the first time you've asked.
No, I know.
Wendy's been here to do presentations before and that question's come directly from council, where you guys want to give us a kennel.
And she's never gotten a address on it?
What does Tumbler do for their animals? There's a little of that there.
Um, good question, Councilor. I don't remember, but I'm leaning towards there might be some type of animal shelter at the Public Works Yard, but. Yeah, yeah, just don't quote me on that though, but they, they do it and helps too. They definitely don't have a relationship with the SPCA just because of the distance.
But we have one, but it's not fixed. It's just another pan for the living poor, right?
Well, it's, we don't need the help for dogs.
Yeah, but if they get paralysed, it's not SPCA standards. It's not up to code for animal. If an animal gets paralysed in there, you can't clean it up. And then every animal, okay.
Yeah, the stall, because it's in an hardcore trailer, they can't be washed down with pressure washed or anything.
They should be stained.
There's something about the heat and I believe there's a running water issue in there because the animal has to have access to pressure. And that's, that's a function of the world we live in, right? There is a set of standards now for a dog kennel. You know, so the owner can keep the dog in a plywood and Canadian Tire tarp in their backyard, but when we catch it, it's gotta be in a fully compliant rail.
Because a dog will bite you. It's a risk.
Yeah, sign of the times we live in. Uh, moving on to recordation, uh, increase in this budget, fourteen thousand one hundred for two thousand and nineteen.
I'm gonna ask a question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
For the municipal emergency program, how come it's only five hundred? What's, what does that entail?
Um, nothing. We haven't actually used it, um, but it's there in case we need to do any kind of emergency planning or activate an emergency operations center for a day due to a fire or something like that.
And we have five hundred dollars in there?
Yeah. Mostly the other, mostly the other stuff that we'd be putting in there in the case of a small fire or if we need to be staffed. So this is, this is to just do some basics.
Because you know that if something adheres, it happens here, we take it on. Regional district will help us, but the town is responsible for the help. The ministry will go.
Depends on if we get one of those FIP numbers, we, you get some of those FIP numbers, then it's, then it's recoverable by the ministry.
No, no, no. Regional district did that and, and some of the directors didn't, don't get their money back.
Yeah, they can be really, they can be really, I worked, I was on emergency ESS for a lot of years. And I went to all of their different courses and stuff like that, and I wrote the original emergency program for the village. So they're, they will only cover a certain amount, but there's all these different stipulations on top.
Two thousand and four was rewrote. The legislation was rewrote in two thousand and four.
Okay. So I know our emergency, our actual emergency plan hasn't been updated in a number of years either, but.
Yeah, they recommended that at the regional district that we do do that.
Yeah. I mean, ours isn't old. I think it's fifteen or sixteen, so it's not like it's, it's not like our traffic control bylaw.
We need to update it.
It's still the one that I wrote. Um, so do you guys wanna see any, an increase there as a precaution? Because as, as we can see, you know, last year it wasn't.
You know, and we might not ever use it, but if we need it.
Well, if you need it, you take it from where it's available.
Bring it to council and say, hey.
Yeah.
Just pull a trunk. It's a emergency.
Declare an emergency. Build a wall around Pous.
Take the weight just away from the employees because we have an emergency. Yeah, need a.
We're gonna build a dog kennel.
Yeah.
It's gonna be the best dog kennel you've ever seen.
He said it'll work for free. Or for us.
Do we wanna leave it as is, folks, or switch it up?
I would, I would put a thousand, fifteen hundred.
Yeah. Okay, uh, motion on that.
Because something that you don't want to ever happen is, but if you have to. Now a second here. All in favor?
It's like, ah, ready to go.
Good catch, though.
That one, they've done that one.
Take a lot of hair, tears, fuck a hundred.
Like instead of taking all of it.
So you can actually take step up and ride out of there, right? Like, it doesn't need to be a function anymore, so that line can actually close up?
Yeah.
Then you might as well put Chanel. She's on the Ellen steps up to the plate.
So back in recreation, oh, yeah, increase there, most of it is due to increased Canada Day costs and additional operating funds requested by the museum. I did put a copy of the museum's budget on everybody's widget there too. There's no layering line item that's like, oh, wow, it's this one, one item that's increasing, they're, you know, they're doing incremental increases to a lot of the, uh, a lot of the GLs. And in our case, of course, uh, you know, Canada Day is, is starting to have an effect on the municipality, we're budgeting forty-five thousand for this year.
What's their wage overhead, Chris?
Sorry?
It says wage overhead, what is that?
I, I believe that's just their wages line, worship.
Because they got employee number three, wage overhead.
Oh, sorry, that, that may be their benefits?
Oh. Does Les, Les have benefits?
I would assume that's sort of the statute of law.
Can you check that for me, please?
So, yeah, you total them up, it adds to fifty thousand.
Uh, but the estimate on the other side?
Okay.
Fundraising, fundraising supplies, like, they do fundraising? $200?
Is that for, like, when they do their pancake breakfast and stuff like that? Do they need to, is that what the doctor?
Well, fundraising supplies, like fundraising is, is when they have annual-
They got nothing there.
I know, but they use that annual, um-
Their pancake breakfast?
Yeah, and their, and their pricing, like, and their tea, where do they put that stuff, this tea? Like, $200 advertising promotion? They must get a lot of it for free.
Well, we, we do a lot of the advertising and promotion for them, I mean, most of our advertising GL is, is-
But fundraising supply, I like, I, I, I'm just really questioning that, like, they have a tea, they get everything donated. People make stones.
Is that the cost of buying Tim Hortons, or? The, the unfortunate part about this, folks, is it's not my budget, so I think if you guys want detailed answers about what's actually in there, it'd be best to invite the museum into-
I think so.
Don't they, should they not come through questions to the library and museum?
Unless council requested, I mean, I, I reviewed it and it seemed reasonable to me, but if you guys wanna know more details, definitely we can invite them in.
Les, you should have increased your budget. And this is where-
I'm raising supplies.
I've got the library's one and it's the same.
Yeah, okay, actually, that's good to know, thanks, I put it in, I put it in the same, but-
I just don't, I work the same time and you do, so it's hard to see either.
Okay.
This is it.
Do you guys want the, uh, delegation from the library?
Do you go in? Yes, please, I, I, because there's questions here that, um, it's not down how much they burn with all these fundraisers, or, or they don't, they don't have any for fundraisers.
Oh, but that's-
But we know this is, this is just the expenses, but we don't, like, we, it's their budget, that, this $6,000 revenue from those accrue people previous years, government of Canada employees, three, total grants, one, five, total revenue from fundraising, yeah. So, I mean, they have to have supplies to be able to have the fundraising, right?
But doesn't say, where does it say what they make from the fundraising?
Funds received from government of Canada, that's blank too. But that, isn't that the pay?
I think that, don't they get a-
Yeah, there's so much to do.
Their student grant, whatever.
But it says government of Canada employee three, fifty-five hundred dollars.
That's not a guaranteed thing, though, so.
But then, like, up here, they got employee three, and I don't think I would have ever given this to them.
So when is the, that's the, you guys are reading.
Yeah, when is they shown, when is expected?
Expenses and everything.
So-
It's definitely, rather than speculating on it, guys, let's, let's get them in, we'll get them to have a conversation with us about where those numbers come from.
Because I think that some of those places should have one, but anyways.
So, is any of you in?
You know, the, uh, I think Les has been doing an extraordinary job there.
Oh, I know, and for, what, he's paid?
Nothing, isn't it?
That's nothing. And maybe he just, this is not his, you know, porté, so maybe he needs some help.
This isn't his budget, council, it's the treasurer of the museum and the board's budget. He can drop it off two weeks, but, oh, no, sorry, Joe, uh, Joe Trombley did, I should say.
Which is Les's brother-in-law? Hmm, huh? Is it Les's campaign?
Yeah.
Is he employee number one?
He's, yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, so we'll, we'll invite them in, uh-
He's over here shoveling, you know? For a meeting, which is Public Works Department.
Keeps him busy.
I know, keeps him busy, but still. So continuing on recreation, yeah, I mentioned the library budget wasn't in yet, but, uh-
Again, I did the same with last year.
Yeah, Councilor Royce brought that in, so that's good, uh, increase in the museum budget of eleven thousand five, we were talking about that. Uh, increase in Canada Day amount by five thousand, um, and then I mentioned here too that we're looking at lots of community events taking place right now. Uh, on the actual versus budget side, um, we're under budget in that category relative to, for two thousand and eight, actual's a two forty-four, budget a two sixty, so down sixteen thousand bucks for this year as well, but it's one of the categories that despite being under budget, we're seeing a pretty clear trend where it's starting to move to the upside. Almost entirely due to the extra events and functions that have been put on, so, um, as long as council's still okay with all of that stuff, that's, uh-
Is there a stipulation for the coordinator, how much she has to, um, participate to make wages?
In-
Recreation.
He's got a contract because-
I don't agree to make any difference, what do you tell him?
Nope, no, 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 he has a contract stipulates two or three recreation programs a month. Uh, I have to, I can bring it back to council, you guys could, could take a look at that, in case you want, yeah.
Having been involved with recreation for a long years.
Yeah, from what I've seen, you know, that Al's doing for us, I can say he's definitely not taking home a hundred bucks an hour over that contract, not even. Probably less than a fifth of that, but-
I haven't been able to get a hold of him.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, but yeah, I can, I can bring that, actually, probably best if I email that to you guys, because it is a contract, so I'll email it to you.
What kind of questions are we in here?
Uh, I'm looking at the recreation numbers directly. Uh, yeah, Poos Park, um, we've still got some dollars in there, so fifty-one hundred for, for this year. This increase, I wasn't able to charge that increase or a lot of it to the capital project, because the different, we were, we were sitting at, I think it was forty-five hundred bucks, give or take, and then we decided to do the grand opening ceremony, so income of bouncy castles and all of that good stuff. So that pushed us over the, the five thousand dollar budget there, we should be able to stay in there. This is really just the minor, you know, items of Poos Park, the line group, I don't know, something that allowed us to watch.
Well, what are you doing about that?
I'll change some things. Uh, where are we going, what else? Recreation coordinator, big difference there between the budget and the actuals, but Al only came on board in October, if I'm not mistaken, so, so that is where it is, I've taken out the benefit line because he's as a contractor right now.
So he's in charge of the, of the-
Yeah. Community center expenditure, left that a little bit because we need to buy some new dishes and wine glasses for the community center. They're starting to get ratty and some of the wine glasses are breaking, so.
Okay, yeah, the settings, their pink dishes got broke, so you don't have complete setting.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to stay within that budget, although Skylar found a nice set that if we bought, would be close to four thousand bucks. Again, you're smiling.
I'm wondering what Sadie had to do with it.
No, that was actually, uh, Skylar and Alistair that were working on it.
Oh, sorry, no, yes, I did, I told Skylar I wanted stainless wine glasses.
Yeah, you did.
Stainless wine glasses?
Those are, those are so good.
Well, it's part that I don't understand now, they break.
That's breakage, yeah. Yeah, the ones with the stems are so brittle now, you, like, clean cutter hand.
So those were the ones, I think if we go with those, we're close to four thousand bucks. But we're renting the facility, we've got a visitor experience there, and we keep them for a long time, so, you know?
Yeah.
The one thing, you guys may be wondering, we don't necessarily go in there and inventory every dish and wine glass after.
Well, you can't.
There's, there's four hundred, I think, of, of some of those items, so.
Well, that's like we would do the rental thing anyways, isn't it?
I mean, those pictures have been in there for-
Rental prices to make more sense now, let's just say.
The pictures were, have been in there since the place opened, I think there's like three or four left, the plastic picture, the pictured.
There's none.
That should, now, there's none, but those should have been, um, discarded three years after the place opened up because-
Having said that, your worship, would you be okay if I switched that from three to, let's say, five or six, and we get some, some new stuff in there?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, you can buy a lot of paper plates for that one.
But if we're raising the rates, then we need to make sure that the people have good quality dishes.
So what do we raise them to?
Five or six, folks, five?
Yeah, well, if you can get that stuff for four thousand, right?
What's, uh, those plates that are unbreakable?
Corral.
Corral, absolutely.
That's, that's not true.
That's not true, when they break, they shatter. They shoot my foot, you're, I know my foot's got scars.
Ice dead, correct.
You tell you go to worship. I have a question, Poos Park, I'm gonna get married next week, I wanna have my wedding down at Poos Park, how much is it gonna cost me? I gotta ask this question. So, I, I'm just saying, there's no power down there, there's porta-potties, there's garbage cans, and there'll probably be picnic benches down there in the spring. So, should we phone the village office and say we would like to reserve it, or do we just go down there on our own and make plans?
As it stands right now, we don't have any requirement to know it.
If it is a big function, I have told people to contact the village and let the village know, but that is taking place.
But where is that, like, that's common sense here in this room?
No, I've told people, I've told people.
Yes, Sadie?
We have no policy.
No.
Well, right, so that's what we're trying to get at. So let's get a policy.
Or, or put it out on our Facebook page or our village thing that-
If we're gonna do it, policy's the, the proper way to go, council, yeah.
Well, we need some direction, some, because somebody's gonna-
Yeah, I've been, I've been asked quite a few times.
Okay.
So does it cost anything? Would it cost anything?
And now, you guys, when we bring the policy to you for the first couple of drafts, could look at setting a cost if you wanted.
I guess I'm not getting married then. Shot to the big one.
Don't feel bad, Barb, I've decided I'm not doing it again either.
No, somebody asked me, how much does it cost to have a wedding gown at Poos Park, and that's not for me. What is there for?
Um, we've lowered municipal parks and playgrounds only because we've got so many capital and special projects to do the benches and stuff, this is just our, our general recurring maintenance GL. Uh, beautification, we went up a little bit, um, special events, Canada Day, like I say, we're sitting at forty-five, we spent forty-three last year, so it's slowly creeping up.
Yes, I know.
It's, well, and that's, that's a good-
But you had volunteers.
No, we didn't, we did it, we did it. Yeah, I was out there yelling and-
Directing traffic.
So, yeah.
If I, if I draft that Canada Day GL, it would go in completely the opposite direction from all the general budget GLs we're seeing right now. To your point, we're probably, we've probably seen a fourfold increase over the last ten years. Give or take, but we're doing bouncy castles now, food vendors and all of this stuff, and it's a pretty awesome experience, but-
We've got, and we've got a brandet, that's Poos's day, one a year, and we can't let that brand fall.
It was, yeah, that was good.
Yes.
And we're, we're getting close to the level where it's, it's getting close to past staff's ability to, to organize it too. I mean, this is months and months and months of, of planning to go into it, last year it was nine, two-hour staff meetings just to, to, you know, just to do the planning, line everybody up.
I think council should actually entertain hiring somebody next year when we actually put it down in Poos Park. Make it a grand opening.
Start from scratch with the contractor.
July first.
It would take a huge, huge burden off our shoulders, your worship, because, of course, you know, planning that stuff pulls us away from managing the other, the other projects as well, so.
Please to buy the bean.
The, the spreadsheet that we have to do Canada Day just right now is, is three pages long in bullet point form and stuff to tick off and, and you. And that's, he's literally put that together internally over the last couple of years, it's, it's a big undertaking, so.
I did the first year, I'm gonna hand it to Ringelby Sadie. I informed everybody, in four days I had that place planned.
Yeah, I've heard that. That's pretty good, so, and special events, other, we've upped to fifteen, and that's just to include, you know, the stuff that looks like is on the horizon. Uh, donations have removed because that's in council's expenses GL for the other donations now. And then the volunteer banquet one is still on there as its own special GL. Volunteer banquet.
I'd love to have, thank you for the volunteers.
I did it every year.
I, it hadn't been done for a long time, so I thought-
So, do you guys want to pass this budget, please?
Some negotiation.
Okay.
With the, with the, with the changes.
So we're in the, in the tenth inning, the ninth inning stretcher.
Hey, 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 second.
Morning. I saw her go.
She was a-
I hope that turned it on video, I was gonna watch the video again.
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention last night.
So I have just some summary charts to go over real quick, um, budgets, speaking budgets, not actuals here at this point, by category, generally government, and I'm using two thousand and sixteen as a base year because that's the year Mary McKitty and I both came in and started, uh, trying to focus in on this stuff. So, two thousand and sixteen, we were eight fifty-five, we're at seven twelve now. Uh, environmental health, two thousand and sixteen, we were fifty-nine, we're forty-eight now. Public health in two thousand and sixteen base year, we were ninety-six six, we're at forty thousand five now. Recreation, two thousand and sixteen base year, we were at three hundred and sixteen, we're at two seventy-four six now. Total by year, one point three million in the two thousand and sixteen base year, under that, under one point one here this year. Me and Chris have done it, the, the important thing to highlight with all of the council is that's, all these budget decreases, we've actually increased the amount of stuff we're doing. While that's happening, so we're doing more for less. By far. And then looking at that, just in a quick graph as well. Pretty nice to see, I sleep okay at night.
Mine do too.
That's all, ballpark.
That's all, folks.
Do you have a ballpark idea on tax?
Tax?
Do you tax it? Increase?
In terms of e- increase? Tax increases are just definitely up to you guys, I'm gonna be recommending something similar to what we've done in previous years, two, three bucks a month on, on average for the representative household.
Yeah, and it doesn't affect, um, uh, the seniors, because they pay a hundred dollars where their taxes are, but they pay on their, yeah.
The post is valid, you know.
Yeah, yeah, so last year the tax increase was right around three dollars per month, or thirty-six bucks a year for the average household. I think it's probably a prudent thing to do to, to do that again this year, but of course, you guys completely set the, the tax rates, go go through that live and, and see the deep effect of it is.
I, I, what really, really makes me mad is that we're taxed on the police. I, I, what really, really makes me mad is that we're taxed on the police. Now they have their full functioning, um, department. Police department, but for the last couple of years, it wasn't, and we've paid tax for policing for the last couple of years. And, and the police department has been down, that makes me mad. That also makes me mad that we have to pay for hospital tax when we have, do not have an adequate hospital. Those are things that, that makes me mad.
And I also think that we should think about, when we think about increasing taxes, especially when we think yearly. And there are people that are on limited budgets. And the government, our federal government, expects these people to save money for their retirement. How? Like, are we gonna be seeing in future people living on the streets?
And that's.
And are we contributing nickel and diming to them?
And we're essentially in competition with those folks for the same disposable dollars from each household that the federal government's in. You know, so every, I mean, people only have so much disposables. So when we see the provincial and federal governments increase carbon taxes and all of these other things, eco fees and carbon taxes and tax rate. BC now has, if I'm not mistaken, it's the third highest income tax rate in, in North America or something, something to that effect. So, you know, and then, then we come out and we're trying to manage the municipality directly with the dollars that are out there. We're forced to put increases of three bucks a month into the household because we feel that's what, that's all people have left that they can afford.
In the last five years, I've seen an increase, like majorly increase in the last five years.
But when was the last time, um, seniors, senior security was increased? It hasn't, and but as politicians, why aren't we bringing this to our federal? You guys are gonna go DFC now? Can you?
Some of the things are planned, except for C M.
But I think that we should really be extremely careful about what we are thinking for.
Yes, and that's why, council, even when I bring those tax proposals back to you guys, I break it down into that easy manageable number so that, you know, we can, we can get a sense of what the taxpayers are actually going to pay over their, their pocket.
I think when we go to U P C M, we need to ask for our policing money back and our hospital money back.
We. We did it last year at tax time, we did a look at about how many people, like, sixty-five and over, their taxes and whatever. It was, we really meticulously looked at that, that it would not increase for those people.
You see them, there's, it's. Grandmother, they're eating, they're having children.
But most of those are in rental homes.
But grandmothers, they own their rental property, they have to increase their tax, they just increase their rent. It's worse those people.
They can't, they're only allowed to do it three percent every year.
But three percent sometimes. Let's just go for three percent. I don't, I just think that they do.
But also we have to look at, we can't be sustainable if we don't, it's not a big thing, like, two percent, three percent. But we can't keep going, no tax increase, no tax increase, no tax increase.
And we were doing that for a number of years and that's what landed us in the situation.
That's why we're in hot water now.
Oh, I understand. I mean, if I brought a cow to Canada Day and put somebody out on the streets.
Oh.
You know, that type of thing.
You know, I, I, I agree with Martin. The, uh, I, I, I really think we have to think very hard as a council about raising taxes. I wanna ask a, a question. What is our total budget expenditures for, anticipated for twenty nineteen?
Across everything?
Yeah.
Um, don't know off the top of my head, but last year it was around two point five million.
Two point five million? Of that two point five million, or, okay, two point five million expenditures, how much do we receive in tax?
About three hundred and forty thousand.
Our, our staff wages doesn't even cover that.
Our, our tax revenue doesn't cover our public works department for seven months.
So, you know, this is unsustainable.
But we need to pass up that, that, there really would pass up.
Nope, we're good, your worship, yeah, that was just the first, the first review here anyways, so I'll make those changes, bring it to you guys for a second.
Let me, um, cancel this meeting. Our adjournments are canceled.
Marley, that was.
You have to speak for her.